A review and introduction to what it's about, we'd like to do that uninterrupted, just let them go through and complete it. And then after that, we'll have a couple guidelines and get the public.
Did you get my notes?
Yeah, I'm gonna record it. Evening, everyone. My name's Todd Ziegler. Appreciate you coming out today. Some of you folks I may have already talked to, I know we got several phone calls. Appreciate that as well. I'm gonna go through, I'm not gonna bore you all night long, I could talk about this for quite a while, but I'll try to sum it up maybe in about ten minutes. Just to give you an overview of how we got to where we are tonight, okay? Alright, so first thing is zoning districts. Shrewsbury Township has, what have we got here? Two, four, six, eight different zoning districts. From rural residential to rural residential receiving districts, ag district, commercial, interchange, industrial. I know this map isn't the greatest to see from, and I'm gonna jump back and forth here to see my screen a little better. But the particular properties we're talking about rezoning tonight, if you can see on the screen there where my cursor is moving, right in here, this is where we're talking about tonight. This here, of course, is the overall township as a whole, which is almost thirty square miles. For those that aren't aware, Shrewsbury Township actually surrounds New Freedom Borough, Railroad Borough, Blenrock Borough, and Shrewsbury Borough. So the areas that you see with the white background here, this is Blenrock Borough, this is Shrewsbury Borough, this is Railroad Borough right here, and then this is New Freedom Borough. So what you see as far as the industrial is just a smaller area, which is just north of where we're located right now. This side of eighty, between eighty-three and the trail, this section right here, we're sitting in right now, is this section right here, which is a commercial. We have a couple of other little commercial areas down in here around eight fifty-one, exit four interchange. Where you see the yellow, which is, I imagine, most of you are probably from, I'm guessing Strawberry Fields, maybe Hamilton's Overlook. Strawberry Fields is suburban residential. Hamilton's Overlook is rural residential receiving. And I'll explain what those are differently, the difference between those as we go on. The suburban residential receiving, rural residential receiving. The suburban residential receiving is these orange areas here, which as you can see is not very much. Then the rural residential receiving, this area here is what we know as Hamilton's Overlook. That's rural residential receiving, and that's the areas we're talking about now possibly rezoning, that's currently rural residential receiving. And then, of course, as you can see, everything else on the screen is all agricultural zoned. Now, the differences mostly between rural residential receiving and suburban residential receiving, both of those are designed to receive development rights from the agricultural zoning district. So in order to develop anything in the receiving district, you have to purchase development rights from a landowner in the agricultural district. Without those, you can't do any development in a receiving district. That's in both zones. Rural residential is a lower density. Suburban residential is a medium to a higher density. Now, the rural residential, you can also, institutional facilities are also permitted. They are not in the suburban residential receiving. Then with the rural residential, which again is the area we're talking about tonight, and also Hamilton's Overlook. Those areas can be developed with on-lot water wells and on-lot septic. In the suburban residential, you need to have public water and public sewer. You can't do on-lot. One of the challenges right now for suburban residential receiving is there's absolutely no sewer capacity available. So suburban residential, you can't develop today if they want to. Unless a developer comes in and has enough money and is willing to upgrade the sewer plant. That's the only way they're gonna get sewer capacity. Not saying it can't happen, but that's the only way it's gonna happen, there is no capacity available at the sewer plant. Can you just hold on, let me get through this, I, we want everybody's questions, but hoping maybe I can answer your questions as we go through here.
Yeah, we're gonna let Todd go through uninterrupted.
But we'll certainly answer everyone's questions. I'm gonna explain development rights just briefly, 'cause I know people ask me, what is a development right? And I don't know if you can see this chart well or not, but the Development Right Program was established in November of nineteen seventy-six. It's when the township developed their first zoning organs. And what they did in order, it's part of their farmland preservation and open space preservation program, is they limit the amount of development within the ag district. So give you an example here. If you look at a hundred acre farm, which is the third one up from the bottom, on November ten, they would've had six development rights. One of those rights must remain with the main tract at all times. So that means they have five available. Well, what can they do with those five? They could either subdivide lots off of the ag parcel, but each of those lots cannot exceed more than one point two acres. That way you can't carve up a hundred acre farm and make twenty acre parcels. Or they can sell those development rights into a receiving district, into a residential area. Now, I know we've had people come in and they bought, purchased farms, and they're like, well, you know, today I have, you know, ninety acres. What they forget is, if you buy a tract that's ninety acres, and you wanna know if you have development rights, we have to trace the history of that tract back to November nineteen seventy-six. So if those five lots were either subbed off already, or they were sold to a receiving district or a combination thereof, they have no more development rights. So that's the max you ever get in a lifetime. So it's not like it resets every time you sell five, sell the farm, does not reset. So, and that's the purpose of receiving district, to get those development rights out of the ag and into a residential district. Now, if you look again, I pointed out, I keep jumping back and forth here. Of course, this is all the township, this is a specific area that we're talking about. This here is Hamilton's Overlook, this is Campbell Road, this is Strawberry Fields West, this is Miller Park right here, Campbell Road. And then this area in the blue is the area that we're, is being proposed for rezoning from the rural residential receiving to the suburban residential receiving. This is an outline showing the affected parcels. Again, this is Miller Park. This is part of the Miller Farm. That goes up here. Now, this side of the road is already zoned suburban residential receiving. Now, the designated growth area, the comprehensive plan. That is a plan that is developed, it's not, it's not law, it's not legal. It's just a planning tool for the elected officials to take a long-range plan and long-range look at what they, how they want to see the township in the future. We are part of a regional comprehensive planning group, the Southern York County Regional Planning Commission, which again consists of all four of the boroughs that I mentioned, as well as Shrewsbury Township. And if you look here, this, I'm gonna call it dark purple here. In the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan, showed it as future growth area. This area up here, the lighter blue is like a secondary, and then the red is a primary growth area. Primary growth area is what you see in the red, and this is actually Miller Park. And part of the Miller Farm is already identified as a primary growth area. So we have the area right here that we're talking about considering the rezoning. And then again, Hamilton's Overlook down here was a future growth area. I wanted to read something to you here. And this is out of the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan, 'cause might be asking, what is the future growth area, what does that mean? Reading directly out of the comp plan, "The future growth area has been established to indicate where development is most appropriate beyond a ten-year timeframe, or if development should occur at a much greater pace than anticipated. This area was chosen due to its proximity of the boroughs and the amenities provided therein, its location adjacent to current public utilities, and the availability of connecting transportation routes." So again, as we looked at, back here a little bit. This area here, you know, we already have Hamilton's Overlook, we have Strawberry Fields, we have Strawberry Fields the other side of Sesquena Trail, then we get up into the borough, Southern Farms, then you have New Freedom Borough to the west, and then to the northwest you have Railroad. So that's where we already have the higher-density residential development, and from a planning perspective, that's where you wanna keep it. Again, that's where the public utilities are and so forth. Now, this here slide, yellow is an outline of the existing Miller family tract. And as I had mentioned, this area here, I would say to the northeast of Strawberry Road, is already zoned suburban residential receiving. This is the area that is rural residential receiving, including this parcel here, which is the Raymar tract. And the township is in the process of negotiating with the Miller family to purchase, it's about thirteen acres, right here, immediately to the, I guess you would call that, to the west, to the west of Miller Park. Miller Park is currently twenty-two acres, and this would be an additional thirteen acres added to the park. So with, with that purchase, if that all materializes, we're going to be losing that development capacity under the suburban residential, which does allow a higher density. And we need to have receiving districts in order to be able to accommodate the use of those development rights from the agricultural district. So that's the intent, is to rezone this area over here, suburban residential receiving, to help offset what's going to be lost if there's a park and open space, but if that materializes and goes through here. Now, just to give you an idea, this is the Miller Farm, the subdivision, again, if it materializes. Everything you see here in this green or some shade of green is the tract. This tract here would be four tracts, this would become part of Miller Park, thirteen acres. This area here, those that are familiar, there's a pond up lead down back here, it's the old farmhouse on this tract. This larger tract here is open field right now. And then there's a piece of the property that's between two existing homes on these two separate lots. This piece would be subbed off, subdivided, and attached to this property right here. So that's what the subdivision would be. Important to understand, the subdivision that's proposed here in conjunction with the rezoning is the separation of land only. I know a couple of calls I got, people are wondering, well, is there a housing development coming? I'm not aware of anyone that's talking to developers at this point in time. If and when that ever happens, they have to come back before this body, the Township Planning Commission, they need to provide full detailed plans showing the subdivision of each individual lot, like they did with Hamilton's Overlook. They'll have to address everything that's in the ordinance, including traffic, I know I had some questions about traffic. You know, they'll have to do traffic studies, including at the intersections. More than likely, if it happens, they would have to widen the road, even a possibility of a traffic signal. I'm sure everyone's familiar with the traffic signal at the end of Campbell Road and Sesquena Trail. The only reason that traffic signal's there because Hamilton's Overlook went in, and that's what warranted that traffic signal. I'm not saying there would be a traffic signal, I'm just saying if there's some kind of traffic control devices that need to be installed, it would probably be the result of something being developed. And again, I'm sure everybody probably understands now, just for this conversation, but I know a couple of the conversations I had, some folks didn't realize that that can actually be all developed today into homes, whether or not this happens, 'cause it's already zoned residential, and it's already zoned a receiving district. The, one of the questions that someone asked me, so I'm gonna share the information. They asked what the purchase price is. The purchase price that we're negotiating with the Miller family is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We had two independent appraisals done. And the one came in at June of twenty-three, which was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The Miller family asked for it to be reappraised, we used the same appraiser. April of twenty-four came in at two hundred and sixty-five thousand. As far as the purchase, how are we gonna pay for it? Township was very fortunate to receive, I have a hundred and eighty thousand, it should be two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in grants, two separate grants that we received that would pay for it, pay for the purchase as well as some of the engineering and the surveying and the legal costs. And again, the rezoning proposal that did go through the Township Planning Commission at a public meeting, they did recommend approval. The proposal also went to the York County Planning Commission. Their organization reviewed it, and at a public meeting, they recommended approval of the rezoning as well. I think that's, oh, I had, so get back to the chair.
Thank you, Todd, I think that should be good background for everybody. Couple guidelines before we open for comments, to try to make the best use of the time we have. You have a maximum of five minutes, we will time that, we'll let you know when you have one minute left, and you you must stop at that point in time, even if you haven't finished your presentation. We will ask you, once, not just right now, but once we start, maybe to line up three or four people at a time at the microphone, so we can quickly move from one person to the other. If someone's already said what you wanna say, you don't need to repeat that, they certainly weren't heard it, so we would ask you not to take the time to repeat it, and if you're here with a group, we would ask you to select a spokesman for the group, so that we can move through things a little bit faster. With that, we will open up public comment. Again, if you could come up to the microphone and line up a few people, line that. Speak loudly into the microphone if you can, so that people who are on YouTube and other places can understand. So you're gonna have to decide who goes first, we're not gonna tell you. If somebody would like to take it first, and if a few people would line up behind that person, we can, we can keep it moving. And if you just wanna sit there and listen, that's fine too. And if you state your name and address as you come up to the microphone.
Good evening, my name is Douglas Zinn, Z-E-S-N-Z-I-N-N, I live at one sixteen Abbey Road. And I have, hopefully I can just go about this quickly. My concern is the proposed change in zoning for Strawberry Road, since I live there. I learned, it's important to know that I learned about the proposed expansion of zoning options when I received the mail flyer. I had no previous knowledge. I was shocked, it's only been a couple, like, three weeks. I did my best to read the flyer, research online, and then I did speak with Todd Ziegler on several occasions, and I appreciate that. What I learned was quite interesting. One is that the expanded options for buildings along Strawberry Road is already permitted. If I'm wrong, just tell me I'm wrong. My understanding is they do have the ability to expand from one to two buildings per acre.
Correct. On Strawberry Road, the park that would be proposed for the park and the residual that Miller family, and then the area that's proposed for rezoning on the west side of Strawberry Road, both of those areas are both receiving, so that is correct, they would both require development rights.
Then I, then I also learned that the change from rural residential receiving to suburban residential receiving will permit single-family attached dwellings, or semi-detached dwellings, or multifamily dwellings, and/or active adult community buildings. And I understand that could also include homes that have a fake front. You have three families living in what appears to be a single-family home, but it's actually a multifamily home. But the outside is designed to represent a single-family home, I'm not sure why, maybe it looks better. I also understand that acceptable sewage and utility resources, as you mentioned, must be available in the roadways, water availability, runoffs.
Todd, microphone, we can't hear you.
Oh, well, it's on, we'll turn it up here, but.
Speak louder, I don't mind.
Wow.
Okay, so I also understand.
If you can speak into the microphone.
I also, I also understand that acceptable sewage, utility resources must be available, that roadways, water availability, runoffs, and other resources must be available, and will dictate what can, ultimately can occur. I also learned that the published, this is fascinating. I learned that the published criteria for this purpose was to be quote-unquote, "short, concise, and free of technical jargon" that would make it challenging for laypeople to read. It's supposed to be easy for us to understand. I will say that I'm highly educated, I'm a short couple credits of a PhD. I have worked in federal, state, and local government in responsible, high responsible positions for forty-four years, and I find this process bewildering. It's so complex, I've spent hours and hours over the last three weeks reviewing and trying to make sense of it. I also found out that the project was to clearly represent the priorities that township leaders and residents said were important. How is this accomplished? Did you have a meeting? This is the first I heard of this whole, what was going on, was three weeks ago, but this had been obviously going on for a year or so or longer. However, and these two things are critical. I strongly questioned verbal and written instructions for the project, since I only learned about them three weeks ago. I don't understand how public concurrence was achieved when only four people, including me, so that means three other people, called the township, and only three persons supposedly were involved in the October fifteenth planning commission meeting. I'm not sure if that's the right meeting. So you don't have like a hundred people from the communities, you're two large communities. You have six people maybe thinking and commenting, something's not, something doesn't feel right. Okay, so what do I, what is my conclusion? I love the Strawberry Fields community, which is beautiful, idyllic, and appropriately designed. I can understand single-family home structures for the community consistent with what has occurred in the immediate area in the past. We are, I think, on one half or two per acre lots, the other development has, I think, half acre lots. I understand all that, I don't know why we can't.
One minute remaining.
I don't understand why we can't be consistent with that. If you need to expand residential community, utilize only single-family building structures on one acre lots. Retain what we have, preserve and do not destroy what already exists. Be sensitive and representative to the people you serve, as these flyers, which I'm going to give you, represent. And I just show the people in the audience, this is the flyer, and I'll show, give these to you all, says I will, and shows a picture of a farm, says I will never understand how someone saw this and decided to build one hundred houses. We have a gorgeous community, a community that's beloved by many, if not all of you, we're all invested heavily. And my printer, of course, got destroyed, ink ran out. You will, you can look at it. And I respectfully request that what we do is, we restrict, and I don't know how you do it.
Tom is up.
Please, listen to what I said and see what you do.
Thank you very much, and if you have the next person who would like to speak. And again, if you would line up a little bit. If you have a couple of people in line, you can move it along faster. Is there anybody else that wants to speak?
Well, while we're waiting for that, if I could just respond to a couple of things. I know when I spoke to Mr. Zinn, you had mentioned about, you read where it was three point five percent response?
Three point two six percent.
Yeah, that, that, that had nothing to do with the rezoning, you were referring to the comprehensive plan review, which is a totally separate document, a totally separate issue. So that did not have anything to do with this. And as far as, you know, being aware, everybody I know gets the newsletter, I don't know how many people read it. We always encourage people in the newsletter to do a couple of things. One is sign up for Savvy Citizen. I don't know how many of you have done that, if you haven't, I encourage you to strongly do it. There's cards in the back there that tell you how to easily do it. Savvy Citizen is just messages or announcements that the township pushes out, it comes through on your cellphone. It might have attachments, could have a notice like this, a map, whatever. So if you haven't done that, encourage you to do that. The other thing is, as Mr. Zinn mentioned, this has been discussed for probably close to a year, if not longer. But again, we have a website, all of our minutes are published every month on the website. All the meetings are recorded and, or uploaded on YouTube, and they're available to see there. If you haven't done it in the past, I encourage you to do it in the future to stay informed.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak? And again, if there's someone who, after a couple minutes of him speaking, if the next person would walk up to the microphone, that would help us to keep things moving.
Hi.
Hello, my name's Eddie Lockridge, I live at nineteen seventy-one Piccolo Court, that's off of Tetherhill Road. I'm not real close to this zoning, so I just want a clarification, 'cause I thought I heard Mr. Ziegler say that because the park was expanding, we were losing residential.
We would be losing, we would be losing capacity to utilize as many development rights as it, as it is now, because it's suburban residential receiving.
Okay, so, right.
So if the park, that would take that away.
Because of this, the rezoning is taking place on the other side of Strawberry Road.
Correct.
And I also heard that there's no immediate plans for what we're gonna do with this additional acreage for Miller Park.
Not at this point in time, we, we do have a grant to conduct a feasibility study and a master plan. And that again, Mr. Zinn, unfortunately, it's, it's reality, I don't know why, but if you ever do a municipal-wide survey and get five percent back, people are really excited in our world, because people just don't respond. But I can tell you, watch your newsletter in the next six months, because we'll be including surveys for what people are looking for in parts of recreation, so it is part of the process.
And just so you know, we have a master plan for Miller Park now. We've been through phase two or three phases. We've put that on hold because we knew we were gonna try to acquire additional land, and then we will do a new master plan for the entire park, not just for what we have as the additional land. And part of that will be, we'll listen to what people went through surveys, we did that the first time, and look at what makes the most sense. Probably initially, we'll put a walking trail there, because people love the walking trails, and then we'll have time to decide what happens with the rest of it.
Well, the point is, I think Miller Park is beautiful the way it is right now. And if this addition is causing this rezoning, I think we need to rethink that whole process, it's been disturbing a lot of people.
Well, one of the nice things with the addition is that we're gonna be able to keep Miller Park, and the third phase would've had maybe tennis courts or pickleball courts, basketball. And we've taken another look at that and said, we think people like the more look that the park has now, or things aren't all, we don't wanna push all that together.
I agree.
But there's a lot of people who want pickleball and some other things, so this now gives us room to do that. And you know, we're not making any land, any more land, so if we don't acquire that when we have a chance, we may never be able to do anything more in Miller Park. We have an opportunity now, so we wanna, we wanna drive that while land's available.
But it's, that's all I have to say.
And if I could just follow up on that, you know, I understand where you're coming from, you know, as far as shifting this over here, but something else to keep in mind, as I said, today, you can have that high density where we want the thirteen acres of parkland, and you're not gonna have that open. and you're not gonna have that open space anymore. You're gonna really tighten up Miller Park and, and you could have homes adjacent to the park right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Please go on up.
Good evening, Mike here, uh, two thirty-five Strawberry Road. I only have one question, and that deals with the comment that I thought I heard Mr. Zen make. And that was, he referenced a hundred potential development sites. Do we know what the number of sites may be?
No, we do not. And, and I'll tell you why. There's, there's so many variables that go into developing a parcel. Uh, for suburban residential, the first thing you have to do is, and it's challenging for a developer because they have to pull out all the acreage that takes up the roads, stormwater basins and everything. So that's the basis for doing your density calculation. So you can't have a higher density utilizing the acreage that's in roads and stormwater basins and so forth. So that's the first step. The other thing in the suburban residential receiving district, which is, I think, a little unique, and actually it's a little cumbersome to calculate when you're looking at it, but the way the ordinance is written, while Mr. Zen's correct, it, it could have some townhomes, it could have multifamily and so forth, but the way the ordinance is written, you cannot have all townhouses. You cannot have all multifamily. The way the ordinance is written, for every multifamily duplex, uh, townhouse that you have, that development must also match that with a single-family home. So let's say there's twenty-five multifamily duplexes, townhouses. You also have to have twenty-five single-family homes built in that community. So it can't be all multifamily type of dwellings. So that's why it's hard for me to say it could be X amount of units because somebody might come in and if they ever go to develop, a sewer capacity becomes available, they might have all single-family homes. They're not required to put in multifamily duplexes.
All right, so a follow-up, since there have been at least two other meetings in the last year leading to this session on that property. There must be some general guidelines in terms of the minimum or maximum number of development sites. Somebody has to have had that conversation. You're telling me they haven't?
No, we, we, we can play, I can tell you right now, and you're welcome to come in. We can play around with those numbers all we want. We could make those numbers what we want them to be based on what kind of configuration we make. You know, whether it's, it's multifamily duplexes or, or all single-family. Because if you have, um, you know, if you do the multifamily, the two-story, with, uh, I think the max is eight units. But maximum height is, is two stories. Um, you know, that's gonna shift around what your available, uh, density is because you need a minimum lot size for a single-family home. And then there's a different lot size for multifamily. There's a different lot size for duplexes. So I, I, I could, I could come up with probably fifteen different scenarios.
Well, I understand what you're saying, however, and I, I hope my five minutes aren't up yet. Uh, but if they're gonna be single-family, you know what that number could possibly be at this point, is, is where I'm going.
Well, if it-
And then if there is a, uh, calculation in terms of how many single-family and duplexes, you should know that number now.
Well.
Am I wrong?
Let me see.
I, I will say, I don't have, have the number-
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I will look here. I can tell you what the square footage is.
All right.
For, for the minimum lot size.
One minute remaining.
We looked at, at the, the trade-offs, if you would, between looking at the SSR now that's there now, and if that goes away and there are no more, and the other is rezoned. It does, it does allow for a few, not a lot, but a few more homes than what you would have in the one section. I don't have those numbers here, but yes, what you're asking, we did look at those. It's probably a year ago, you know, when we were looking at all that.
All right, I, I just find it interesting, and I've only talked for like two minutes. Everybody else has to answer my questions. I, I just can't fathom you don't have that minimum or maximum number of development sites.
We, we did look at, uh, rough numbers for that.
And it rings out all I'm looking for.
I just don't have them with me.
And, and it's hard to say because I'm gonna use Hamilton's Overlook as, as an example.
And the stormwater.
Is the stormwater.
Yeah.
Hamilton's Overlook could have had more homes and smaller lot sizes if they didn't have the stormwater basins. Because when you build a home, you're required to manage your stormwater. And you can put seepage pits in where it catches all the water from your downspouts.
All right.
So that's what I'm saying, to, I, I don't know what a developer's going to do, if he's gonna put in a stormwater basin system or not.
Am I asking a, a question that is unreasonable?
No, we asked, no, we asked those questions, and we did have the rough, the quick numbers. I just-
So, so somebody can get back to us on that.
If I went home and got a file, I could probably dig that out.
Okay, so somebody can get back to us and let us know what that is. Minimum net.
If you're gonna make your contact information, email if you have it.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll get you some.
Yeah, what I wanted to show you here is, um, for a single-family home, uh, with public water and public sewer, is this, uh, I'll make sure I'm on the right here, suburban residential receiving?
I, I understand. If, if, you could answer that later, that's fine.
Give me, give me your email before you leave.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And I'll get with Todd together, we'll do that. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, good evening. My name is Tawana Melton, um, three, four, six Eliza, um, in, at Hamilton's Overlook.
Right.
Um, and so I just, this is our first meeting here. So, a couple of things. Is there, you talked about a strategic plan that you've talked about for over a year now. What are the, and I heard you say pickleball, I heard you say potentially houses or whatever have you. And I know that there's no developer that has even mentioned anything to you guys, but what is the plan? Like, when you talked a year ago, what was the thought? Or do, is that something that was discussed during that time? That's question number one. Question number two is, I know we're all here, and I know it's a lot of families here from Hamilton's Overlook. Do we really even have a vote? Or is it, will it be this body that will make the decision? And, you know, kinda, if you get a developer and it happens to be group homes, that's what it's gonna be? Do we as homeowners have any say-so in it?
Well, I can answer that, that part, and we're here to listen. Um, usually we just listen, we don't comment too much. But it is this body that makes that decision. The five of us that are here, you have elected us to do that. Um, and did we look, a year ago when we looked at this, um, if I understand that question right, essentially, what, what we were looking at back then is we had a desire to purchase the park land. Um, we did, we actually did have developers a couple of years ago that approached, that were kinda looking at the park that we wanna, the park we wanna acquire. And they were looking at that, and they submitted some preliminary plans. And we looked at it and said, no way. You cannot, even in the SSR, they could not put the kind of density in that they wanted. And they didn't come in for any formal approval. They just were looking at maybe buying the land. So they wanted to say, can we build all this? We said, no. They came back a second time and said, what about this? We said, no. Um, and, and they went away. So we have no, nobody that is interested in any of the land at this time.
Okay.
We just, it, it kinda broached the opportunity for us to, to try to acquire because that's been on our horizon for some time, Todd.
Now, as far as I guess you're saying is about whether or not it gets rezoned, um, yeah, that is up to this body. But as far as like if a plan comes in for a subdivision, um, or land development for a housing development, this board makes the final decision, but they have to follow what our ordinance states. So we have a zoning ordinance, and we have a subdivision land development ordinance. It's already been adopted. So as long as they check off all those boxes, you know, this board really doesn't have any choice other than to approve it.
And just to give you an idea, that process probably takes a couple of years. If a builder came in today and wanted to build there, and he's not gonna put a shovel in the ground for a couple of years because he goes to, to the staff review, he goes through the planning commission, he comes here, and there are a lot of other issues that need to be covered. So it doesn't happen quick. But today, nobody could do that unless they were putting in well-inseptic. And they can do that today. You could have a bunch of houses in back of you today if they were willing to put well-inseptic in.
I appreciate you answering the question.
Sure.
Um, and it kinda explained it because again, this was our first meeting here. And I think I'm gonna speak for us as, for myself, my husband and I, as a homeowner, just to take into consideration, just dependent on, you know, the developers coming in, and I, I get the aspect where you're coming from. But just as a homeowner, just understanding that the purchases that we made and having the here, you know, potentially a group home or potentially townhomes and things like that, it could really affect the value, so that, that was the, the thing.
Well, one of the things you wanna bear in mind is that you think there were people who felt the same way when Hamilton's Overlook went in, and I wouldn't guarantee that there were. So, so now, now you're changing places. Now, someone who maybe didn't want Hamilton Overlook there, now you're there, but you're looking at this. Uh, I live in the same place where we were part of a, a farm at one time, and it's across the road, there could be development. But, you know, people have to realize, remember, we were, we were that place at one time. So just to give some empathy to the whole process, um, there were people that didn't wanna see Hamilton Overlook, you know, in there too. But we're glad you're there. Yes, sir?
Jeremy Anderson, uh, three, three, nine Eliza. Um, I just wanted to sort of clarify something that I think Mr. Ziegler said about sewage. If this goes through, there is no sewage capacity, so builder-
At this point in time, the only way that we know that they could probably develop it is if they're willing to expand the wastewater treatment plant, which everybody's sewage goes to New Freedom Borough's treatment plant. So they'd have to work with New Freedom Borough, not us. Um, and number one, they'd have to be open to that. And number two, the developers would have to pay for it. They're not gonna pass that cost on to the current users.
So in that sense, going to this zoning could almost limit a developer from-
At this point in time, I think it severely, severely limits it.
Right.
Um, but again, none of us can predict whether a developer comes in and thinks, you know, it's worthy or not. Um, the last I knew, they were probably looking at four or five million dollars to, to expand the plant.
Probably four or five years.
Yeah. Yeah, fifty years, but-
All right, that's all I, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Gentlemen, how y'all doing? How y'all doing?
Good.
Good. I'm Rodney Hicks, uh, three, one, three Eliza Road. That's my wife Bridget there. Um, you mentioned something about how people didn't want Hamilton's Overlook there prior to. That is completely different from having multifamily properties and group homes. I sell a lot of multifamily properties down in Baltimore as a Realtor. And I know what type of clientele that brings. The properties that we've worked hard for and purchased, and I moved from Baltimore up here to get away from that element. So we cannot liken a group home or a multifamily home to the homes that we've purchased over Hamilton's Overlook. It's a completely different-
That's a good point.
Right? And so when you bring those renters there, the next thing that's gonna come is public transportation because they need some way to go. They need, they're gonna have to get public transportation to get to where they need to go to. All of them are not gonna have vehicles, right? Which is gonna bring a different type of element. I worked in law enforcement for twenty-two years down in Baltimore. And as a Realtor as well, I was dual career. And I see and I know what type of clientele is gonna come. And we've invested a lot of money into these properties. And we have a lot of people here from Hamilton's Overlook. And I just think that is gonna bring a different type of element. And if I'm being honest, and again, forgive me, this is my first time in one of these meetings ever, because in Baltimore City, we didn't have these, right? So this is new for me. And I was, I was gonna sit there and not say anything, but I cannot do that. That, that's gonna bring, is gonna kill the property value drastically. If there's anything, and I don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Ar. If there's anything that we can do to change that, please, I'm sure, I speak for everyone, let us know.
One thing to bear in mind is that just because it's zoned for that doesn't mean anybody would build, that a builder's gonna build what he can sell. You know, and he may not be able to sell that type of product here. Um, and today, again, unless he finds a way to get a lot of sewage, he can't do that anyway.
But the fact that there's a chance, somebody is gonna try it.
There is a chance. And that same thing could happen right now on the land we're trying to buy. That's not quite in your backyard, but it's close.
It's close enough.
So that can be done there today, if they have a sewer. They don't have that today either.
You know, I feel good being able, being able to leave my garage door open. Sometimes all night and go to sleep and know that my stuff is still safe. And my, my car, I don't have to lock my truck. And my kids are out there playing, I don't have to worry about. I moved from an area from there to here so that I could have that. And I'm sure others have done the same.
I appreciate you that.
So, that's me.
Appreciate you talking. Uh, we're gonna do, we're gonna do, if anybody can speak before, before we have anybody come up a second time. Sure, come on up.
Oh, good evening. Uh, my name's, uh, my legal name David Dixon, I'm three, forty-seven Eliza Road. A lot of people in the neighborhood. Never, my, I get my middle name Chris. Um, appreciate, uh, the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I, um, I, I know, I'm gonna echo a lot of what was said before, but not directly. Um, we, uh, have been in the area for nearly twenty years, but we were on the Maryland side. And, uh, uh, part of the appeal to come in and building in Hamilton's Overlook was, uh, what, exactly what, you know, what Rodney described. He did a, a great job describing, well, I think, how a lot of us feel. We certainly understand, you know, I, I'm in construction myself. I realize the process, you know, you can't, you know, I, I, you know, to, to be able to have Hamilton's Overlook and say, oh, nobody else can come. I don't think that's really the sentiment, but, um, just the, the makeup of this township, uh, you know, part of the allure for just being a rural, we met, um, that's what brought a lot of us here. And I think, I don't think anybody's looking to exclude, but I think we just, uh, you know, we're trusting, you know, that, I guess, you know, our elected officials just, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to be heard that. Yeah, there's certainly a concern that, you know, we, we, yeah, don't wanna turn it into, you know, a suburban area. And I think, um, you know, that's just, you know, what we're trying to convey tonight. Um, and just, I think Rodney nailed it when he said, just even the potential, so, um, I think that's, that's one of the biggest things. And, uh, second, we're big outdoor users, and the discussion about, we go to Miller Park, and, um, what we discovered is Miller Park is not a dog-friendly area. You know, the signs clearly indicate that. So if there, if, if we're having expansion discussions for Miller Park, um, I like the pickleball idea, other than try signing up for pickleball anywhere. Uh, and the classes are all full, so you're gonna have, good luck finding someone to teach you. But I guess my point about that is, there needs to be more opportunities for, uh, dog owners, things like that, if we're gonna expand this park sometime in the future. I would hope there's consideration. I know there's irresponsible dog owners, we see them. But, um, you know, there still needs to be an opportunity to be able, for everybody to be able to enjoy these things.
Well, you'll have your opportunity with a survey to express-
Yeah, thank you, thank you. But, um, I appreciate the opportunity to be heard tonight, and appreciate the people that have come out, uh, to be able to express their concerns too. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yes, sir?
Yeah, good evening, Rob Grandy, I'm three, four, five Eliza. So I back up directly to the, uh, the field properties. So definitely concerned about might, what might come in. So if it does come to be that it is a mix of townhouses and, uh, single-family homes, uh, my brother who's in the business in the Baltimore area has stated that it's often customary to, for example, line the adjacent properties with light properties. So in other words, uh, if there was mixed properties, the, the single-family homes might, um, be adjacent to the current Eliza homes and then, um, townho, townhouses like in, inside of the other property. Is that, is that a thing, or is, you know, is that a, maybe a Baltimore thing, or, you know?
Every developer's a little different, you know? Um, but typically, I mean, they try to do a transition instead of a real hard, you know, it's kinda like that with zoning, you know? You try to go from commercial to the heavier, you know, um, you know, the higher-density residential before you get into the lower-density residential, then you get out into the ag. But again, that's up to each individual developer. You can't, you can't make any guarantees of that, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're, we're only allowing one time.
That's not wrong.
You've got five minutes, and you had your five minutes. I wanna know if anybody else? Is there anybody else here that wants to talk?
Let them talk.
I also do, or I have, or limited.
Can I, can I start and use my time? Can I, can I start and use my time to him?
No.
No.
Why not? President, we're not starting. They do it in the government.
We're not doing that.
I'll ask our solicitor, I, I feel that we should not let somebody talk multiple times.
Those are your rules.
I'm sorry?
Those are your rules, sir.
Yes. Is there anybody else who wishes to talk?
That's the problem here.
Last chance. Okay, we'll close the, we'll close the public hearing, we appreciate your comments. We've listened, um, you know, there are a lot of things that, that need to be considered. So I hope you can put yourselves in our spot and decisions that we need to make that we think serve the entire township best. And, and, and comment that you made, if you looked at the map that Todd did, the large part of the township is zoned agriculture. And we are trying very hard to keep it that way, but we do need to get rid of some development rights and they wanna help us do that. So that's why we're looking to somewhere where we can use more of the development rights. But, um, look at all that green and that is something that this board is committed to keeping green, so the town stays very rural. Todd, you have anything else you wanna offer?
I do not.
Alright, alright, so we are finished with the, uh, public comment and the hearing. Thank you all for coming out, you're certainly welcome to stay as we move through a couple more hours of our meeting. Uh, for those who wish to leave, we'll just pause a couple seconds so that you can do that. We need to ask you if you will take that out in the lobby if you wanna talk so that we can continue here. You're just the very beginning of what we need to do tonight.
Mister Chairman, I'm, I'm going to, uh, I'm gonna close the back doors so that we can hear.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Todd, appreciate it. Alright, um, how's the board feel? Are we in a position where we're ready to vote on the ordinance?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, so we were then, um, we're looking at this ordinance now, twenty, twenty-five, dash, oh, four, that makes the map amendment for zoning. Um, is there a motion that I would like to put before the board?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Want to specify your motion?
Motion number.
Twenty-five, oh, twenty, twenty-five, oh, four?
Twenty-four, five, oh, four.
Your motion is to.
Adopt the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, just wanna make sure we clear what we have. Your second's filled?
Yeah, I second.
We have a motion and a second, but we would adopt the ordinance twenty, twenty-five, dash, oh, four. Questions from the board?
I don't have any questions, but if we comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm, did you get a second for that, Bob?
Yes.
Wonderful. Um, the, uh, areas already able to be developed. Uh, the goal has always been to remove development rights from the farming areas and to put them in areas where. Have been identified as, uh, developmental around the boroughs, which is where this ties into. Um, they can be developed today, maybe not at the current density, um, but they're still able to be developed. Um, and there's still no proposed development in the near future due to sewer restrictions. Um, that was all I had, so I was commenting.
I'd like to make one other additional comment. Uh, not only have we had Millers before us about rezoning.
True.
We previously had another property enter in this area, wanting a rezoning several years back.
In, in, in the same area?
In the same area.
At the time was looking for spot zoning, as I recall, which is why it was denied, but yes.
That's another reason why we took into consideration this move that we're making because we did have a request for a spot rezon in this district.
Good point.
And we acquire additional parkland.
And just for everybody's knowledge, this has been talked about for probably more than a year. It's been in several public hearings, not public hearings, but public meetings where people could have commented. It's been through our planning commission, um, it's been through the staff. All of this is up to date pretty much on our website about what's going on in the newsletter that comes out. So as Mr. Ziegler said, please take advantage of those, but, and if you subscribe to Savvy Citizen, uh, you get text and information automatically. So, um, I would encourage you to use those if you have any trouble getting on the website or Savvy Citizen, just call into the office here and somebody will help you through that. And if you did not get a newsletter, there are copies of the last one back, uh, on the table back on you. Alright, any other comments?
Just, just to get them, we acquired the parkland basically for free, uh, it's being purchased through grants. So there's no additional tax to the residents.
Just benefits.
And, and to speak to grants, they are highly competitive, they are difficult to obtain, um.
Well done, Todd.
I give Mr. Ziegler a lot of credit because he was the one who did the application for the grants and followed them through, um. There's, there are a lot of people that, money goes so far, when it runs out, then the grants stop. So we have the grants now, we wanna make sure we use them, if we don't, we lose them and they go to somebody else. And they might not be around next year when we wanna, or another year when we wanna look for them. So we've considered all that as, as we do this vote as well. It's been a lot of work going into getting where we are and get that parkland expansion. Alright, I'll call for the vote. And again, to clarify, the vote is to adopt twenty, twenty-five, dash, oh, four.
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative, the, uh, adopted. I, I think you'll find as time goes on, things will work out, so I hope you give it, give it a chance. But we do appreciate your comments and understand and, um. And we want the township to be very rural, that's what this board is committed to, so we're gonna do what we can to keep it that way. Thank you. Alright, the next item is approval of the minutes from our October first meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve, questions on the minutes? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative, the minutes are approved. Um, not listed here, but I think we can include that, we have another set of minutes for the, uh, budget hearing that we had.
You can, or if you, since it's not on the agenda, why don't we just hold it till December?
Fair enough, yeah.
Alright, we'll hold it till December.
We don't wanna get in trouble.
No.
Just, just so you know, another public meeting that was held and, and we had no one attend it, was our, was our budget meeting. That's a workshop, we hold years over to the public and run, runs through the budget, so. And, and you're welcome to inspect copies of that and in fact, I think a little bit later in the agenda, don't we, don't we approve that?
We'll, the board will authorize it to be advertised for public inspection.
You, you can see what comes in and what goes out. Uh, I could, um, have the treasurers report?
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, October twenty, twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report. Just a comment, we had just under, we had over nine thousand dollars in interest, about a thousand dollars in fine. And even still, this late in the year, a few, uh, reservations for picnic tables at the various parks. Um, questions? Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative, we have approved the treasurer's report. Um, we do have a session for now opening public comments, I, I would say we're, we're done with the public hearing. But if you wanna address anything else, uh, you're welcome to step up, there's another opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. Something I wish us to address at this time? Okay. Uh, moving forward, we have a couple of ordinances and resolutions. The first is the adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code.
Make a motion to approve. Ordinance twenty, twenty-five, dash, oh, five.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second that we would adopt ordinance twenty, twenty-five, dash, oh, five, which essentially adopts the International Property Maintenance Code. For those out there that assist us when we have properties that are not kept up, dilapidated, um, safety issues that gives us a little bit more power to go in and have them taken care of. Any questions from the board? Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. I vote to the affirmative, we have adopted that.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I'm always loathe to interrupt your process, but as you heard Mr. Grose say, your solicitor's watching right now. I, I don't wanna watch any more than I have to. Uh, quite often you don't have me at your meetings at all, so it's great to have a chance to come here and see you. I think it's very economical for you to use me when you need me. I don't think you need me any further this evening, so I'm gonna go home and watch from online.
We, we will be happy to excuse you.
Always good to see you, fellas.
Thank you, thank you.
Take care.
Take care of you too. So Resolution twenty, twenty-five, dash, oh, eight, actually, Todd talked about the com, um, regional comprehensive plan. That's been a two-year process. We received two grants to help fund having the, uh, person work with us to, to put that plan together. Again, competitive grants, again, Todd was the person that applied for them. This brought in also though the municipalities that we surround. Um, it has been before our planning commission, it's, we've had public, a number of public hearings on the com plan, some here, some in other places. Um, it basically says, here's how we wanna look at the next ten years going, going forward. And, uh, you saw pieces of that from Todd's presentation. So we would be voting tonight to adopt, um, that plan. That plan is, um, how many pages you think that is, Todd?
Many.
Over two hun, well, over two hundred. It is available on the township website, Shrewsbury Township dot org on the homepage if you look. Uh, the full text is there as well as the exhibits for future land use.
A lot of very interesting background information, um, if you can stay with the whole thing, it, it's actually not bad to go through. I did every page a couple times and, and offered some edits and comments to it. But there was a committee who's been working, I think it's been two years, Todd.
Yeah, we had an engineering firm as a consultant.
Yes. So, um, we're ready to, to vote if there is a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty, twenty-five, dash, oh, eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that will adopt the comprehensive plan, which is resolution, this is not an ordinance, a resolution, twenty, twenty-five, dash, oh, eight.
Uh, we, uh, are waiting on boroughs for this as well, I believe?
We adopt it independently though.
Alright.
Right.
Yeah, we adopt independently, um, Shrewsbury Borough, I believe, has already adopted. I know Glen Rock Borough has and I know River Borough has. New Freedom Borough, I believe, is going to revisit it again, uh, their December meeting.
Sounds good.
Meeting I was at, they voted against it.
Yeah, but my understandings are going to revisit, but I, I don't work there, but that's what I've been told, so I'm not sure.
That was all I had. You have, you have a motion and a second.
Alright, any questions before we vote? Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative, we have adopted a comprehensive plan and my congratulations to the committee that spent a lot of days and a lot of time to get through all this and put it together. It's, I would encourage you to get a chance to look at it, it's a good document that tells you what should be happening in the township as time goes on. Alright. Uh, next on the agenda is some subdivision and land development issues. The first, and I'll let Todd kind of lead into each of these, but the first is at twenty-eight, ninety-four Holly Road, some modification requests. And a final division plan, since we have a lot of new people with modification requests. Is a builder may come in and say, I know your ordinance requires this, but I believe, but I have a good case for asking you to give me some way. It might be sidewalks or coves, um, to make sense, we do that, if it doesn't make sense, please hold them to the ordinance. These have already been reviewed by our professional staff, they're people we contract and engineer, I mean, obviously, and so forth. They've been approved and they've been looked at by our planning commission. And one of the things we asked Todd as we go through this, are these recommended by, uh, for approval by staff or by planning commission?
Okay, the first plan, uh, we have is on the corner of Country Club Road and Holly Road. Um, of course, the dark blue lines is what's proposed. And all it is, is a, an adjustment of a lot line because currently this property, their lot line comes over to this point. So what they're doing is selling some property to this homeowner so they have a little larger lot. Um, so there's no new development proposed or anything. Um, the, uh, first thing you see there, there's two modification requests, one is for roadway improvements, widening and so forth. And the other one is for curbs. Uh, staff as well as the township planning commission recommend to the board that you grant those modification requests. Again, because they're existing properties, existing dwellings and there's no development proposed.
Is there anything outstanding on the August twentieth CS Davidson letter?
Yeah, we'll need to do that as a separate motion, but if you approve the plan, um, I would make that conditioned upon all the comments in the CS Davidson review letter dated August twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'm sorry.
Be addressed prior to recording.
I, I jumped ahead.
That's alright.
Um, make a motion to approve the modification request for twenty-eight, ninety-four Holly Road and one, three, four, three, two Holly Road?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the modifications, questions before we vote? Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative, the modifications are approved. Next, we're looking at the final subdivision approval.
Make a motion to approve, conditional upon the, uh, outstanding items on the August twentieth, twenty, twenty-five CS Davidson letter have been met.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the final subdivision plan? Questions? Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative.
Can I just clarify, is everything addressed? I think everything's been.
I believe it has, I'll have to check with, uh, with Megan tomorrow, but.
We'll, we'll be in touch if you need anything else, so. Sorry you didn't get to talk. That's.
Sometimes that happens. Alright, we have a, um, second one, which is modification request and a final land development plan, this one, two, two, eight, from Deal Court.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pull your plan up here.
After all the work she put in on that board.
I think she won't, I think she won't be disappointed. Again, I, I'll, I'll just do a quick overview like we do, but you feel free to interject and add anything if you wish. Um, this one here is, uh, it's an existing farm. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Petrie own it, it's at the end of Deal Court, uh, this is Interstate eighty-three. Um, what they're proposing is a, um, poultry barn.
Chicken house.
Chicken house, poultry.
Sorry, I was translating.
Uh, a, a chicken house, um, anyway, it has been through staff several times and, and we worked out all the details and the kinks and so forth. Um, and it did end up going to the township planning commission meeting. The modification request that you have before you, um, includes, uh, waiving the requirement for a preliminary plan and going directly to the final. Uh, the embankment width, um, and as well as a paved drive. Uh, again, this is at the end of Deal Court, which is a dead end road. Um, everything passes past the Petries Farm House, um, and then this is Interstate eighty-three. There's no residential developments in, in close proximity to the property, so we did not think, given that it's agricultural, that it necessitated a paved driveway. Uh, so for those reasons, again, township planning commission and township staff recommends to the board of supervisors that you approve the modification request.
Did you get that second one, two, was there only two there?
Uh, it's three.
Three, yeah.
The preliminary plan, the embankment width, and the paved drive.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, modification request for one, two, two, eight, three, Deal Court?
Second.
Does that have to be continued on, uh, the review by? The, the, the final.
That's, that's the sub, right, that's the final subdivision.
Alright.
How many chickens, uh, does this barn hold?
I'll let you answer that.
We're building it for the capacity of eighty thousand white laying heads.
Eighty thousand?
It's a lot of chickens.
Yep.
Very nice. I, I normally wear a Royal Farms hoodie. So, respect.
How do you manage odor control?
Chickens will smell like chickens.
It's true. It smells better than pigs.
He's got, that's the beauty of it. Chickens smell like chickens. There's only a certain amount that we can do to control the odor.
Just for the record, your name?
My name's Dag a Petrie. That's my wife, Ella. And this farm.
I knew that, I just.
This farm request is directed across Interstate eighty-three from here, which is perhaps Mr. Rogers' concern about the odor. I've planned, I am currently living downwind for the planning building location. Where we moved from, we had a chicken house probably a hundred feet away from our residential house. Some days it smells, but we survived. We've got eight children, they're all healthy. As far as how we control that odor, there's a number of things. And it all ties into managing a chicken house for economic profit. We maintain the ventilation. We try to keep the manor as dry as possible. This plan, if done, the chicken house will have a manor storage area at the end of the chicken house directly in line with the exhaust fans. Keeping the manor dry is essential for various reasons. Odor, keeping the ammonia down, keeping your flies down. It all benefits me. Healthy chickens, happy chickens. More money occasionally. At eighty thousand birds, that sounds like a lot. We have two other laying houses that we manage. Both of them have capacity for eighty-six thousand, which puts us up over the CBO level.
Are they on different properties?
They're on different properties. They're not here locally. It sounds like a lot of chickens to manage, but after a while, if you get used to it, I look at you guys, your job, I think, I could keep track of all the legal stuff. You sit here, it becomes second nature to you. We're a family-run operation. We have no employees. It's just me and my children. And that's the way we'd like to keep it.
Just interest, that's why I asked.
That's perfectly fine. I realize people think chicken houses and immediately goes odors, flies, dust. And I agree, all those things are present in a chicken house. It's just part of the nature, but we do our best to try and limit it. And I will agree, it still smells better than pigs' pennies.
Well, I disagree.
Uh, did, did we have a second for my motion?
I'll second.
Thanks, Bob.
Any other questions? Satisfied? Yeah? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative. We have approved the three modifications that were requested. And now we will move on to, uh, approve of the final subdivision plan.
Make a motion to approve the final subdivision for one, two, two, eight, three, Deal Court, contingent upon all outstanding items on the thirty of twenty twenty five C S Davidson letter have been satisfied.
I'll second.
Thanks, Bob.
Have a motion and a second. Questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes. I'm really trying to hurry this down. Now we have five votes to the affirmative. We have approved the final subdivision as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess this is our first process. With your township, would we be getting a message from Megan about when to get the plans?
Yeah, what we'll do is we're required within fifteen days to send out a, uh, conditional approval letter. And then, uh, Mr. Petrie or yourself representing them will need to respond, accepting the conditions. And the conditions will be that everything's addressed on this C S Davidson letter, and we'll outline what those items are. So just watch for that.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I notice there are some first time people, we're glad to see that, that you have questions of what we're doing and how we're doing, and don't be afraid to, uh, ask us and try and explain a little bit, but also keep up with the movement too, please feel free. So we move from there to some, um, subdivision, and again, this is where that word subdivision can be confusing because it can apply to subdividing land, or it can apply to approving, um, buildings or housing or something. So we're going to move now to, um, um, land development, when there's a modification request. Oh wait, we just did that.
No, we're on the, uh.
Yep.
We're on the Miller.
So we are now looking at, uh, actually, what came up earlier, we're looking at the Miller Farm and.
Yeah, so, um, the, the three modifications that are requested are the feasibility study for water facilities, feasibility study for sanitary sewer facilities, and the installation of curb and sidewalks. And again, the reason for all three of these modification requests is due to the fact that it's simply a subdivision of land. There is no development proposed and, and none can happen with this.
So even though it's the township buying this land, we have to hold ourselves to the same ordinance requirements. We make no exceptions there. Are there questions to, um, Todd at this time? Or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for the, uh, modification request for six sixty Strollberry Road.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for, uh, the three modification requests. And this would be the, uh, Miller Park expansion, so just to help everybody understand it. Questions before we vote? I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative, so we have approved those three.
And on the plan, if the board, uh, makes conditional approval, instead of the C S Davidson review letter, this one in particular is the York County Planning Commission review letter dated October third of two thousand twenty-five.
But we don't need to do that yet because we're only doing the modifications prior.
Uh, did you not vote on those yet?
We, we, we just approved the modification.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm at the plan now.
I don't have anything about the, uh, hold on. Yeah, I don't have anything about the final for Miller.
For, for the, uh, the comments? For the, for the Miller?
Correct, yeah. It was one of the modification requests.
Yeah, you have, you have the plan?
Got a plan.
Okay. The, the comments, um, they're all administrative that are outstanding, and it's not a C S Davidson review letter. It's a York County Planning Commission review letter.
Could we modify the motion we have?
Yeah, yes.
Include that?
You're talking about the plan, correct, not the modification.
We haven't gotten to the plan yet.
No, I, you.
We're fine for the modification.
Right. Did you vote on the modifications? You're done and over. We're on the plan.
Correct.
So if you make a motion and a second and vote on the plan.
Right, you're right. I'm sorry.
It needs to be conditional upon the York County Planning Commission.
Correct, October third.
October third, twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
Um, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second that we approve the minor subdivision plan and conditional upon the outstanding issues in the York County Planning Commission letter.
From October third, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, October, sorry, twenty twenty-five.
I said so moved, so I would have to say it all again.
That's right.
But we got there.
Okay, so you, your motion, statements?
Thank you.
And a second.
Thanks, Jeff.
Second. Are there questions? We shall move.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. We have approved that. Thanks for keeping this straight, Todd.
You're right.
Tin, Tin left early. We could have used him.
The, the next two, um, item D and E are simply reapprovals, which is a time reapproval, because if you recall, after the board conditionally approves, it has to be recorded within ninety days, otherwise the board has to reapprove it. So there's still a couple of administrative items that need addressed in both of these plans. You can, if you wish, you could do that just in one motion for both of those plans for an additional ninety day.
For twenty, twenty-four forty-six Hantown and for Phantom?
Correct.
And that's for an additional ninety day approval?
Correct.
Make a motion to extend an additional ninety days for twenty-four forty-six Hantown Road and Phantom fireworks.
Second. Have a motion and a sec, and second to extend the approvals by the review process. Questions? Which will vote?
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative. This complaint is reapproved. And.
On the reports.
Leave that now brings us to reports. And the manager's reports in front of you. Todd, anything you want to add to it?
Uh, not really. I was saying one has any questions. Of course, you talked about grants and so forth. We actually have five different projects that are open, uh, from park improvements to curb and sidewalk to the Miller Park. The, the two of them are Hantown Park Playground Improvements, as well as Windy Hill Park Improvements, which is the addition of a pavilion. Um, those are both moving forward and anticipate to be completed by middle of December.
You saw a lot of piles of dirt and construction going on as you drove in here, so that's the Hantown Park improvements.
Probably too dark then, but.
Was that?
Probably too dark at that time, but.
That could be too.
But other than that.
Where are we on the, uh, the sidewalk grant? Where are we on the sidewalk grant?
The engineer, uh, Jeff Schu, C S Davidson, they're still doing surveying. They're, they're working, they're getting plans together, but, um, he anticipates that he'll have everything shovel-ready as far as the plans and bid specs and everything, but we're probably looking at uh, two thousand twenty-seven before we actually go out for bid in the spring and construction that summer.
And, um, for the public's benefit, this is going to be sidewalks connecting what to what?
Yeah, this is to connect. We have the new Royal Farms, we have the Aldies, they have curb and sidewalk. There's curb and sidewalk going under eighty-three. Um, but going up Wolf Road toward, um, the Burger King and Cracker Barrel or whatever, there's no sidewalk going the whole way up there. And of course, from eighty-three up to Mount Erie Road and up in front of the Walmart and so forth, there's no curb and sidewalk. So this project would curb and sidewalk the rest of that area.
And to give you an example, that's a million dollar project. We have, we received two grants to cover the bulk of that cost, and we are seeking a third one that we think we have a good chance of being successful with that would require or would cover all the costs. If it doesn't, then we'll probably appeal to some of the merchants along the way to help fund it. We can require that, um, but we're, we will try to do it on a voluntary basis rather than force it, but one way or another, we should get most of that covered. And I believe the two grants for the park Hantown, was that a matching?
Yeah, Hantown, um, for the two parks, we received, uh, four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars toward those two. And for the curb and sidewalk project, we received grants to date total of seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, then Miller Park already talked about that. And then we have a matching grant to do that master plan update for Miller Park, if, if this materializes with the land purchase, so.
And these, these grants come from different places. They might come from York County, they can come from some of the conservation districts, they can. So the first thing is.
Some of it's casino funds, grants.
So the, the first thing is we need to make ourselves aware that the grant potentials are out there. And then hopefully we're smarter than the other people applying and can be successful. And, um, we've been very successful. We feel good about that in our projects. I see more and more people, I think hazardly walking along, um, eight fifty-one from somewhere down around eighty-three up and around. That's a pretty dangerous place to go, so that's been a high priority. We actually tried to get that grant for what, three years? Joined with Shrewsbury Borough, which would allow them to go into the borough, and we were not successful. Last year, we said, we're gonna try one more time. The borough said, we're not. And we were successful, and maybe because the dollar value was less by not combining with the borough. And hopefully they'll have success on their own, uh, as well. But again, uh, a lot of good news to, um, Todd because he's the person. Like, we did for the sidewalks, he was actually a, um, specialist in grant writing because we thought that amount of money, uh, we needed a little help along the way, so, um, I am correct in that, right?
Yes, yeah.
And it was our engineering firm, C S Davidson, that has a person, and I think they helped us be successful in that. Anything else on your report or any questions that anybody has? Uh, you note that we are hosting an LTAP class on November thirteenth on local road safety. I think there's probably positions if anybody wants to attend that, and you know I plan to. You have in front of you the zoning officer code enforcement report. A group of the board spent some time in detail going over this earlier, so I don't know if there are any other questions on or not, or anything Todd wants to emphasize.
Yeah, I have nothing additional?
It's a rather lengthy report that tells us, um, what's happening in code enforcement, sewage enforcement, zoning enforcement, allows us to track it and make sure things are moving and we're aware of what's going on. Um, quite a few pages to that report. Um, we also get a report from, um, maintenance, our maintenance department. Anything in there that, um, Todd, you probably want to address the speed study, anything else?
Yeah, anything I'll just, uh, quickly mention here is Steltz Road, which is.
For background, can we kind of just, a couple words to the people that are here?
Yeah, um, we did a, we have the capability during the speed study, some of you folks may have already seen it, where we have the signs along the road that flashes what your speed is. We get, when we get complaints about speeding or whatever, we'll go out to that particular area, we'll set up the, the radar signs in both directions. And for about two weeks, we don't monitor, uh, with the display, just to get a base of what the speed is. Um, but we have found, as long as we've been doing them now for probably two years, at least, if not longer. It's really interesting because you have two weeks where you don't have the display showing. And when you start showing the display, believe it or not, really doesn't make any difference. On average, it reduces per week about one mile per hour. So if it's flashing at you, it doesn't matter, so, doesn't seem to affect people.
Not unless there's a policeman standing next to you that found that, that.
Uh, but what we normally do is a six-week study, um, and it what does it, it does the average daily count of vehicles, uh, what the average speed is and what the eighty-fifth percentile speed is. And, um, if it's a township road, we could, you know, potentially adjust the speed limit signs. If it's a state road, we could make a request to PennDOT, but they must do the traffic study and determine whether or not that they'll change the signage. So at, at minimum, what we'll do, and what we will do with this one, because it does indicate a little bit of a speeding issue, we do notify the Pennsylvania State Police, uh, of the location, we share our results, and then they usually show some presence for a little while, uh, to help try to curb that. But, uh, this was on Steltz Road, uh, Route eight fifty-one between Birthday Club Road and Angom Road. The posted speed limit is forty miles per hour. Uh, in the westbound lane, um, the eighty-fifth percentile was forty-eight miles per hour over the, this was actually a seven-week study. And then on the eastbound, heading toward Angom Road, that eighty-fifth percentile was fifty-two miles per hour. And again, it's posted at forty. So we will pass this information along to the state police and ask them to show some presence.
I think in particular, a concern is that, um, westbound, six, over six percent of the cars exceeded fifty miles an hour. And eastbound, twenty-one percent of the vehicles exceeded fifty mile an hour. And that's a total of forty-six thousand vehicles in one direction and thirty-nine thousand in the other direction. So, uh, it's probably only the third one we've done that says, we need to try to have the police look at this. We do not, as you may or may not know, we do not have a regional police force here. The boroughs that surround us do. You see your tax bill really go up. We did participate. It's about a million dollars a year. State police are pretty good. They will follow up when requested. They come to a couple of our meetings each, uh, year to ask kind of what's going on, what's happening. Not a lot of crime here. Most of it is here is at the Walmart. And it's as many fights in the parking lot as it is people, you know, stealing stuff from the store. But anyway, that's kind of what we do with, with that side. So you will, you also, um, provide a copy of this to the people that thought that's a lot of.
On that speed study, we had, uh, Ada doing eighty-one to eighty-five mile an hour.
Oh, country red. That seems a little excessive.
And it's a.
I might have driven past that a couple of weeks ago doing fifty.
And there's a site restricted too, it's, you can't see, that's, that's one where we put the school bus.
Yeah, eighty's excessive, yeah.
All right, thanks Todd, anything else?
No.
We have the report from C S Davidson, who is our contracted engineer, and it's, uh, several pages of things that he's involved in and tracking to keep us up to date. Questions that anybody has, he's usually very thorough in this information. Um, recreation commission for, again, a few people that are still here. We joined with New Freedom Borough to establish a joint recreation commission. Again, another grant was involved, we, we see, what's, what's the grant called, a, um.
Circuit rider.
Circuit rider. So for four years, we have a grant that covers the cost of us hiring the recreation director. Uh, full salary the first year, seventy-five percent, fifty percent, twenty-five percent, and then nothing after four years. And the goal is that they will establish new programs and be able to basically justify their existence five years from now. Um, so that's been about a year and a half. And the, uh, initial director we hired, um, got married, moved down to the area, had some other opportunity. So we're in the process now of hiring, um, a new rec director. I believe we have eight hours of interviews set up for a little bit later this month to interview several people. We were fortunate to get some people fairly qualified. Jeff Renault is our representative from the board to that commission. Uh, there's a representative from New Freedom Borough, and there are two other representatives or four from the, from the town.
There's two, two or three.
It's three plus you, make it four.
Yeah, and this is three, uh, one council member and three residents for New Free.
Did I miss anything in reporting on it?
No, we didn't have any minutes or anything from the last meeting, because of Gina, now, not having Gina, things have, there's not been a whole lot happening.
Trying to keep some things going and, um, look forward to getting a new director and get some new energy from that. I don't think we have anybody from fire or EMS, I don't know that we have anything, Todd.
No, I just want to update on the markets, um, they're making a lot of improvements, uh, you know, for safety.
To the emergency exits?
To the emergency exits, the, the doors have all been addressed.
Good.
Um, they're doing a lot of other work as far as some lighting, uh, fire pole arms and, and so forth. They're not required to do that because they're a pre-existing building, but they're voluntarily doing that, so they've been very good to work with.
This is the markets, it's Shrewsbury, which is in the Aldridge Market, um, up the road. The fire department had done some inspection and found, um, doors blocked and things like that. It came to the township and asked for help because it's something that our building code inspector can, can enforce. I'd say they've been very cooperative in, um, correcting.
I'm saying the, uh, uh, Shrewsbury Borough Fire Department said they wouldn't go into it, correct, in its current state?
What, what hap- what happens if it really gets bad, they issue a, um, do not enter or no fire department will go in. So because of the hazards that's in there, so they had been under that status, this last time they get to go to that, they were.
Yeah, th- those have been lifted.
Well, they have been lifted.
I, I believe primarily it was because, uh, emergency exits were blocked or unable to be exited. And in the event of an emergency, the way Brad explained it before, um, they need to be able to get out if the building's coming down, they need to know where those exits are. So if they're unable to, they're blocked or they're locked and, and unable, um, he wasn't going to sentence people in, um, to.
Oh, he was a director that comes from York County and nobody's allowed to enter. Not the public, but the fire department. That it there? Stan, you have anything for us? We have an emergency manage- manager, uh, let me start over. What is that full title, emergency?
Management coordinator.
I am, uh, Stan Walters, I live in, I live in twenty-six Essex Circle Drive in Shrewsbury Borough, and I am your appointed emergency management coordinator.
There it is.
Uh, we do have a regional E M A, so, um, originally I was the E M C for Shrewsbury Borough, and then your volunteer. Uh, departed for some reason or another, and Todd sought, uh, counsel from Cindy at the borough and said, who's your emergency management coordinator? And then, uh, I agreed to become your appointed coordinator if you would pursue regionalization. So today, we have a regional emergency management agency that comprises the township and all four of the burrows previously mentioned that are encapsulated in it. And that allows us to have a single plan, uh, single staff. We're very fortunate to have two emergency operations centers, one located here at the township building. And the other one, uh, is the Shrewsbury Borough, uh, council room turns into an emergency operations center when we open all the cabinets at, at one end of it. And if anybody would like to see that, they can, uh, contact the municipality they live in and they can get ahold of me, I'm happy to give tours and show people. Uh, the, the emergency operations centers and give a brief overview of what we do. Uh, tonight, you should have before you, I, I know it was the last minute this afternoon, a report, so I don't know if Todd.
So they do not have it in front of them?
Okay, all right, so Todd didn't have a chance to, uh.
No, we can access it.
So just to review it, so during the month of October, uh, our drought conditions, uh, not only returned, but they worsened from what they were. And I, I know a lot of people, uh, probably have a misconception of, well, we had two inches of rain last week, but that, that's not enough to alleviate a drought. Uh, so when you do get the report, you'll have a map that, uh, is produced, uh, by the state, uh, showing the condition we're in. It's not terrible, we're at D zero, uh, it goes to D four, so we're at the early stages. But we're having some very dry weather now, there's a line of storms that's going to come in, but there have been some concerns about fire here in the last couple of days. Uh, we're continuing to review the E O P to get that, uh, to you for, uh, promulgation, so you can readopt it, uh, before the end of the year. We're also still continuing to work on getting all the radios upgraded so that we can talk directly to the three fire departments on their, um, uh, station channels. Uh, and, uh, we're circulating a doodle poll to try to get enough interest in the elected officials training that normally occurs. In February of each year, uh, Bill James from the York County Office of Emergency Management is willing to come down here. There are, uh, some dates, uh, mentioned in the email I sent out that you'll see once you get that. He'll do the class down here if we can generate enough interest to do it, we don't have to wait till the dead of winter in February or, uh, go all the way to York to do it. So, uh, hoping to get, uh, some interest in that. We are waiting on shelter agreements from, uh, two, uh, entities here. Uh, the York County Office of Emergency Management is basically seeking to expand, uh, shelter capacity. Uh, in the county beyond what the Red Cross is capable of doing. They rely a lot on schools and there's no way, they can't force a school to give up space in the school, like during the school day for a shelter. So they came up with an agreement, they've approached, uh, Grace Fellowship on the top of the old Kmart Hill. And also the New Freedom Borough Community Center as possible, uh, shelter locations that we could use. In the event that we needed a mass shelter of some kind, uh, and those are pending. Uh, the committee that oversees me, uh, authorized the change in our, uh, cloud storage from five gigabytes to two terabytes. I just need to come over and, and, uh, catch Todd when he's here and have free time and we'll go to E O C and, and make that update. Uh, accomplishments, we, uh, we conducted the, uh, fall community exercise at the Shrewsbury Borough E O C on October seventh. And we had representation from almost all the municipalities for that exercise. It was run by county through Zoom and, uh, basically, they gave us a scenario that required, um. The use of, uh, a P I O function or Public Information Officer. The scenario was there was a large community event about to start a couple of days, and they were expecting outside agitators. Uh, so there was additional security being requested, there were also a lot of rumors and disinformation on social media. And so the exercise we had was for about twenty minutes was to tabletop that information and figure out what we would do as. E M A and elected officials to make sure the event didn't have to be canceled. And so it, it was a good walkthrough of, um, our, some of our checklists and, and thoughts about P I O functions. Uh, we also took part in the National Night Out that was held on the carnival grounds behind Station sixty-one in Shrewsbury. Uh, we used our canopy for the first time and, uh, two of us successfully set that up. But we had, uh, information from Pima, we had coloring books from kids, for kids, uh, from the, from the Red Cross. Uh, they have like a series of, of coloring books, uh, that use a, a little penguin called Pedro, something that, you know, it's not scary to kids. But it teaches them about emergency preparedness and like a fire in the home and things like that. So we were handing those things out to people who were there. The helicopter and the fire trucks were more interesting.
Was it well attended?
Than, than we were, uh, but there was free pizza and free, uh, Rita's, uh, ice was there too.
Stan, how, uh, what was it attended?
Uh, you know, I, the, it's sponsored and hosted by the police department, by some of the regional. Um, I mean, they, it's hard to gauge, I mean, maybe there was a, a couple thousand tops.
Oh, okay.
I mean, because people came and left.
Right.
And, uh, but, you know, the fire department demonstrated, uh, using the jaws to cut up a car that they had there. Um, they had several canine demonstrations, uh, somebody flew in a helicopter and they were allowing people to get in, sit in the helicopter. They weren't getting rides, but, you know, you could get in and see the controls and stuff like that. Then there were a number of, um, community organizations that were there, uh, handing out things, uh, so, you know. I, I thought it went well, and unlike, unlike the prior year, there was no windstorm that came along and tried to blow all the canopies away, which was good. So, uh, if you have any questions now or after you see the report, uh, by all means, let me know.
Thanks, Dan.
For those left standing as a volunteer, a very hardworking volunteer, I tip my hat to the hours he's been. And I did participate in the exercise he was talking about, but as always, Dan, we appreciate what you do. Uh, I think we have, you have the report, I think, from the last super committee, any questions from that? Okay. And, um, we did, um, just add, we did have a, uh, ad hoc ordinance committee meeting, the first one we had in a while. Identified some ordinances that we think we need to prioritize to, um, begin to work on things for like data centers and, um. Especially that case, da- data centers and artificial intelligence that are reappearing or appearing everywhere, so we have done that. Uh, I did, if the plan and the commission was, I mean, hearing board typically are no questions, but just for the audience, bring those up. And, uh, that brings us to old business, I have chairman's report, so.
I would say, it wasn't on the, uh, the agenda, but yes.
What's that?
I said, the board chair report wasn't on the agenda, but yes.
It should be.
I didn't see it.
It's, it's.
Under supervisor comments.
Yeah, it's here.
My apologies.
It's land, it was land.
Oh, there it is, I overlooked it.
The only thing I would point out that might be of interest is, um, learned from the L last L G A C meeting. Penns- Penn State University is giving a one-hour rabbit webinar, which means like a Zoom meeting, on data center on November nineteenth. And since that's an item of concern and high priority for ordinance, if anybody gets a chance to tune into that, if you go on their website, uh, you register, it's easy to do that, I've done that. And, uh, then they send you the information, so you can, um, sign into the website. And I think it's from eleven o'clock to noon, I believe. So, that's kind of the highway I would go from, from mine. Any comments from anybody else? All right?
No.
We have some old business, I think these are basically all updates from Todd, so.
All right, just the first one, you tell me, do you have parks?
Park improvements.
Yes, we have covered that, that's right.
Library, I saw they're having a book sale, that didn't fill me with confidence.
Um, I can give you a, an update on that. Paul Smith has basically been forced to become a branch, so they will not be a member library. They are in the process of trying to, we had a meeting earlier this week with, uh, Art did. Um, they, um, are trying basically to negotiate the best deal they can, and in addition to the contract they need to sign. They are also trying to, to get a memorandum of understanding, which would. Put additional requirements on the library system and how they support, uh, Paul Smith. Uh, so both libraries are going to become branches, uh, it's either that or just independently, which they really can, really can do that. So they're trying to do the best deal out of that they can, and their hours will definitely be reduced, don't know how much yet. Staff will probably have some reduction and so will some of the other, uh, programs that they offer, but I think they're committed to do the best they can. And we will need to be looking at, um, how, uh, the way we fund things going forward. We don't have any money due to them anytime soon, but what we do.
Already been dispersed, isn't it?
Yeah, we, the, the.
Jim?
Yeah, but we'll do a final one in December.
So what we do, we want to make sure that's to the friends of the library, otherwise it just goes to the county library. Um, and maybe even earmarked for some project, but, so before we cut a check, Todd, make sure we talk about that.
I'll verify that, but let me, uh.
Okay. Are you doing that now?
No, I was, I'm, I'm making myself into.
Okay, so you're up again on the, uh, S P C A contract, I guess?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to, to report since last month because Art and I finally got, were able to get together yesterday and. Um, we have a couple of things where I'm going to shoot a letter off, uh, if not tomorrow, probably be Monday or Tuesday to the S P C A to try and get some additional information. So I will definitely have that for our December meeting because we'll have to make a decision at that point in time.
Okay.
And Boundary Road?
Uh, Boundary Road, just to let you know that I did talk to the, uh, property owner, uh, again, and he is going to actually get his property surveyed. So once he has that completed, he's going to contact me, uh, we'll meet with him and, and kind of see where that falls. In what was Boundary Road at that point in time.
Property would have to be surveyed to.
Yeah.
Let's go through it.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Any questions on any of those to Todd? Um, then we have, uh, new business, and I guess the main thing there is that we authorize advertisement of the proposed two thousand twenty-six budget.
I'll make a motion that we authorize advertisement of the twenty twenty-six budget.
Second. Take your pick, I think it's a tie.
Who was the second?
I'll give it to Jeff.
You don't have.
We have a motion and a second to authorize advertisement of a proposed budget for two thousand twenty-six, question? Which will vote?
Aye.
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 Aye, five votes affirmative, we have voted to authorize advertisement, and that will come up for us to approve in December, right?
Correct.
Has to be done in December by the, uh, N B C requirements.
I was going to say, if it's a new supervisor, it's able to be reopened in January, but I, I don't think that qualifies in this.
Correct.
Uh, you are correct.
Just for the record, congratulations again, Bob, on your landslide.
Uh, we have three stormwater agreements, they're all our standard agreement, and unless Todd feels otherwise, I think we can hit all those in one motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the, uh, stormwater agreements for one McCullough Drive, two-two-four West Forest Avenue and seventeen-twenty-four Haintown Road.
Uh, second, uh, questions before we vote, I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, five votes affirmative, we have approved the three stormwater agreements.
No correspondence this month?
No correspondence this time.
I've got, I've got one new business. Um, can we add new business?
He can comment on it, you just won't be able to deliberate. He can comment on it. You just won't be able to deliberate if it's something to deliberate on because it's not on the agenda, but he can certainly raise it.
Right, you can bring it up, but you can't put on it.
Correct.
Pennsylvania PSATS, PSATS, they have a model ordinance available for implementing supervisor compensation. And it's based on, the compensation's based on the township population. And ours is five thousand to nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine population category. The current caps paid to the supervisors are two thousand five hundred dollars. And this is, I don't know the exact number of years, but this has been in effect for ten, maybe fifteen years. Probably fifteen years, okay? So I'm, I'm thinking that I'd like to make a proposal to increase that. Act ninety-four twenty-four, which came out in October thirty-first one year ago, in twenty, October thirty-one twenty-four, they posted new maximum thresholds for supervisor compensation. So in our group, the new caps effective December first of twenty-four were four thousand one hundred ninety dollars. So I'm proposing, if, if, I'm not sure we'll have it tonight, but for sure, put it on December's agenda, okay? That. Lost my train of thought, but basically, I'm proposing that we adopt the new caps. Who knows, it could be another ten years, fifteen years before it's changed again. Now, the way this works is if we were to vote on it, you know, in the near future, it doesn't take effect for anybody until they're newly elected, okay? So for, so I'll just use some examples. I'll just say for myself, I've got four years, I've got three years left to go before I run for election, if I choose to do so. So I would still stay at twenty-five hundred dollars as the rest of us, because I think you and I are the next one up for election, until we are elected again. But I just feel that it's worthwhile to make the adjustment that's been a lot, now allowed after fifteen years or so. And you're saying we can't have a.
No, we have to have it on the agenda.
Okay, so I'm proposing that we, in voting yes, that we put it on the agenda for next, next one.
Yeah, I, I could put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Just for general knowledge, we did look at this probably about a year ago, and the board elected not to in, in, increase. And again, we look each individual.
Sixty-eight months.
It couldn't affect any, cannot affect the city supervisor, so.
Who knows, I may not be elected again, I may not run again, but I just think as a policy that it's worthwhile that we make the pay adjustment.
Okay. I think we'll see that on the next, next month's agenda. Don't have any correspondence, but you do have, I think everybody has a schedule at their table of kind of the things we'll be doing year end, so it's a pretty lengthy schedule, so I'll give everybody a copy of that. Should have been in the pile of things you have. If not, I have an expedient here.
This?
Looks like that.
I did not. Thank you, gentlemen.
The schedule of the things that we have, we'll work for the rest of it. You didn't luckily have a lot of that. So you have an opportunity for public comment, and one gentleman left, so I don't know if he wishes to address the board on anything.
Actually, I'm not from your township. I'm a neighboring township.
Well, we'll listen to you. We just won't only listen with one of you.
Name's Jack Kugel, twenty-six oh one Oakwood Lake Drive. The only modular home in that trailer park. First of all, you want to hold on to him forever because grant writers are hard to come by. I mean, really.
We have how many more years, Todd? Two?
You can't, you throw your part flat knowledge on.
You guys gave him a lot of pats on the back, but you know, as, as a former public servant.
The successor is sitting right here, so.
You better be taking notes.
But first of all, impressed with your facility here compared to, I probably attend no less than six meetings a week. What I'm trying to do is learn more about the area. I'm fairly new to the area, only three years, but I'm learning how you all operate differently, but yet still alike. But I'm impressed with your facility because some of them are just, I can't hear them, they have no microphones. You guys got.
Well, we've been in this for, for.
Two, little over two years.
Little over two years. Before, we had our offices about a mile up the road, and our maintenance group was here, and that, that building was in pretty bad shape. So long story short.
That's where most of them are, in the maintenance buildings.
That, that's where it was before we had the.
So we said, well, let's bring them all together. And we kind of, over the, our time, knew what we thought would work, what is monitors or a nice area, both for our employees, re-employee. Are we up to eight now outside?
Seven.
Seven. So we employ a, a, I guess, eleven, ten, eleven.
We have eleven full time right now.
It's a nice place for them to come to work. They can feel if you go into the maintenance section, it looks just as good as this does. It's, it's got a lift and a wash bay and all those things. So we thought, we knew, we knew we wanted lobby space where people could wait. We have a really nice conference room next door, so other things can be going on, so.
Well, it's funny, as many times I've been by here, I didn't know it was back here. I saw the park. I looked beyond the park, but any other thing is, I like how you explain to people what you're doing, even though some people are wondering what you're doing. But you're explaining to people what they're looking at on the agenda and stuff. Other than that, they just roll right along the agenda. So I got to compliment you guys on that as well.
Thank you.
I noticed no women on the board, but.
We have one. She resigned.
We have, we've got two on the planning commission now.
Do you? Well, I'm also looking at a planning position.
And we did have.
We did have two.
Up, up into.
Two? Okay.
We had two.
Yeah, there were two on in the early, like.
Sue and Cynthia. Ten years ago.
Yeah, like twenty, twenty twelve, twenty fifteen.
And then Ann resigned.
I don't want to waste your time. You've been here long enough.
We don't waste time when you tell us good things.
Yeah, we, we even extend it to six or seven minutes if you're going to say nice things. I'm kidding, we're not allowed to make exceptions.
I got to get home too. I have a wife.
Well, thank you very much for saying those things. Someday, if you have the time, come up, they'll give you a good tour.
Actually, I've talked to him on the telephone already once. And I talked to someone on the commission.
Planning?
About the Bs, about the B ordinance that somebody was trying to introduce somewhere.
But that may have been Shrewsbury Borough.
That was Shrewsbury Borough.
But I, but no, but I, I called both because I'm learning, you know, the biggest thing I'm learning is there's little tiny towns that are now boroughs. I always thought they were towns, but they're boroughs.
Where, where, where did you live before here?
Before here, on the waterfront down in Baltimore County.
So, so you're learning the difference between a Commonwealth and, so York County is about the size of Baltimore County.
Yes.
It has seventy-two independent municipalities that are self-governing.
Believe me, I've been in fifteen.
Very little county level support. There's no county police force. You know, there's, I don't think there's any county road department, is it? So every, so it makes it a little difficult because we all have a little difference in our ordinances. We are all self-governing, but Pennsylvania looks at driving it down to the low level, and that's, that's us. With the low level. What people don't realize when they go to elections, that we probably have more to say about what's going to happen in the quality and safety of our land, it's going to be a level of goal.
You're right, and that's, that's one of the biggest things I've learned. I, I used to work for a House of Deputies member in, in Maryland, and, and everything was so widespread, you know, nothing came down local, and.
They both have advantages. They both have disadvantages.
And they both have their disadvantages, but.
We try to do more and more in combination with the boroughs we surround so that we're not duplicating, you know, if they need an extra dump truck to pave, or we need one, or we have some equipment we buy and share because none of us need a full. We're trying to do a recreation council that we're starting again, all those things we're trying to.
Yeah, because I'm used to, on the other side of eighty-three, I'm used to heart and, and that operation. And like you say, they hired a guy, and he's doing a great job of raising money for them to keep sustaining his salary.
So we're trying to do more of that, but the downside is we're certified by three volunteer fire departments, so we have to try to support them. We were certified by two EMS departments, so we have to try them. So that makes it where the borough, but the other distance you've, the difference you've probably seen, boroughs are smaller, more compact, probably not as much population as a township, but it's compacted together. We're spread out.
And they don't have, most of them don't have agricultural lands. And that's why I, I mentioned about, about New Freedom. They were concerned about that county commission pointing them out to be a growth area, and that's why they turned it down. They were really upset about that.
I think there was some, some misunderstanding about that.
Yeah, because they, they were part of the, the group. They attended public hearings, some of their elected officials, and from what I understand, that, what I have heard anyway, I believe there was some misunderstanding, so. I know one of their planning commission members is going to be attending their next meeting and talking about it, so hopefully can clear up that misunderstanding.
Well, again, go home.
You can come back anytime.
I will be. Unfortunately, there's three meetings all tonight. I have to decide which one to choose, and yours I hadn't been to yet, so that's why I came.
Well, I know you made that choice. We appreciate your time, Bob.
Thank you.
Most to do, Jen.